I call the meeting of the Deerfield School Committee to order at 7 o'clock PM on August 19th, 2020. I do want to point out to everyone that this meeting is being streamed live and is being recorded. So we will commence with the agenda. And the first item on the agenda after the call to order is a review and approve minutes of May 13th and June 18th, 2020.
This Trevor McDaniel, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Wednesday, May 13th, 2020.
Do we have seconds? Is that David? Do we have any discussion? I hear no discussion, so all those in favor, roll call, vote. David Sharp?
Yes.
Carrie Echols?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
And Ken Cutterback, yes, it's unanimous.
Make the motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, June 18th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second. Carrie Echols?
Carrie, I thought that was Carrie, so, alright, any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, all those in, not all those in favor, roll call, vote, David Sharp?
Yes.
Carrie Echols?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
And Ken Cutterback, yes, it is unanimous also. So that takes care of the minutes at this point in time, and we are up to the financial statement.
Okay, so first thing we're going to talk about is the warrants that were signed electronically. So we had a batch of warrants in July that were for fiscal year 20. There were eight warrants totaling $49,916.42. And we had two batches of warrants signed for fiscal year 21 already in August. The first contained five warrants for $13,685.32, and the second had three warrants totaling $51,161.33. So thank you, School Committee, for reviewing and signing those electronically. Ken, I did send out this report to School Committee today, so you should be able to pull those numbers directly from the report. And I do apologize for not getting it out to you sooner. I worked as quickly as I could this week with all of the meetings that we had, so I got it out to you as soon as I could today. In the future, I'll aim to do it in February and get it to you early.
I think, given the circumstances and the fact that we are able to review the warrants now online and before we sign them, it makes things much more efficient, so it's, no need for an apology, especially given this special summer that you're having in the offices, so. Thank you very much for the information. I've had a chance just to glance at the financial report, so. So thank you again. Any other news?
Well, I did want to go over the finances that I reported on in that report for this meeting.
Sure, absolutely.
There's a lot of information to take in. I'll try to talk as clearly and precisely as I can, but move quickly so that we don't hold up the rest of the meeting. But what I'm going to do is first talk about fiscal year 21, how the general fund wrapped up and all of our revolving funds, then, I'm sorry, fiscal year 20. Then I'll go into talking about fiscal year 21, what those revolving funds look like at this point, given the revenue and expenditures, and then we'll close out by talking about the grants that are available to Deerfield Elementary for COVID-related expenditures. So we met about three months ago. That's the last big financial update that you received, and at that time, we thought we had about $115,000 remaining to be spent in the general fund. We estimated that we would spend, or I estimated, I should say, that we would spend around $94,000. And it left very little money remaining in Deerfield's general fund budget, around $20,000, which it was agreed upon that we would allocate that for the one-to-one technology initiative so that we could put that money towards more Chromebook purchases for students. Any remaining funds, if any beyond that, were to be reallocated from School Choice so that we could put money back into School Choice in support of the level-funded budget for fiscal year 21. Well, I'm happy to report that my estimating was completely off. We actually had more money available than I anticipated, and we ended up doing a transfer of $195,000 from the general fund back to School Choice for use for this year and years in the future. And that Chromebook purchase was also covered by the town funding for the Municipal Cares Act grant. So we ended up with quite a bit of money going back into School Choice. So, you know, I have to thank Tina and the other staff who are responsible for spending at the school level for really taking the budget freeze seriously and really keeping expenses down to a minimum in that last six weeks of school, so thank you for that. Any questions before I continue?
Just one question on the Chromebook purchase. Have we heard anything about delivery? Any updates on it? Okay, that's all, curiosity question.
Yeah, last I had heard, they were on back order, and I think one of the other principals had heard maybe November they would be here. And I'm sure Darius or Tina could talk more about the existing Chromebook state, regardless of that delivery, if you guys want that information.
Alright, so thank you.
Okay, so moving on, so the School Choice analysis. There is some bad news here. While we ended out in the general fund positive and were able to move money back, School Choice revenue was $113,000 less than we anticipated. School Choice numbers are based on your end-of-the-prior-year numbers, and unfortunately, when the budget was built going into fiscal year 20, the counts were not necessarily looked at very closely, the counts of students, and our enrollment in FY '20 dropped compared to FY '19. So what DESI does is they base your 20 funding based on the prior year, and in June, then they make an adjustment if you've been overpaid or underpaid. And we had been overpaid in the prior year, so they adjusted down our School Choice revenue by $113,000. It's very unfortunate, but not much we can do about it at this point. The good news is that expenses were significantly lower because we had the reallocation from general fund, but we also had some payroll expenses that were lower than we had budgeted for School Choice. So we ended up with a net increase over the projected numbers of roughly $100,000 over what we anticipated, and the School Choice revolving fund is right around $1 million, which is pretty close to where we started last school year at. So we're still in a really healthy shape, which is great news because we are going to have some hardships to consider for FY '21 from COVID-related tuition and revenue losses. I'm going to move on from there to the Early Childhood revolving. This was an account that we also discussed in May. We knew that we were going to have tuition reductions because we were not charging tuition during the COVID closure, so that revenue was down about $27,000. Good news there is our salaries and expenditures were lower than budgeted. We didn't have as many expenses in those last few weeks of school. We didn't have the June summer staffing to pay for out of this count like we do normally. So we still ended in a positive note, and currently, the end-of-year balance is about $18,500. The Special Education revolving fund is the next fund that we're going to talk about. Revenue was exactly as we budgeted it, but expenditures were slightly less, so this resulted in an increase in revenue of around $15,000. And going into fiscal year 21, the Special Education revolving account has approximately $82,000 in support of future years. The final fund that we're going to talk about to close out FY '20 is the School Lunch revolving analysis. Again, another account we discussed in May. This fund had a revenue loss because we were giving free lunches to, not just existing students, but siblings. Anyone really who wanted it could come, which was great. We could offer that to our community, however, it did mean that we had a decrease in revenue. We did get some reimbursement from the government, but it was certainly not where we expected things to be. The net profit and loss for the year was a loss of about $13,000 in the School Lunch program. Thankfully, there was a good beginning balance, and we're ending the year with almost $26,000 going into fiscal year 21. Any questions about the '20 summaries or any of those revolving funds?
Just one question, was there any way that... So could the CARES Act help cover some of that funding? I know that the towns paid a little bit for the senior food, but it was just cost, so we probably lost money on that too. Thank you enough. I really, on behalf of our seniors, I can't thank you enough for what the school did to step up, and it's still doing, providing lunches and breakfast and stuff for our seniors. It's just been a huge help, and such a, even just a social, where they can come and get food, it means the world to them, and just to get out and be able to get something and have some food and breakfast for the next morning. It's been tremendously positive, wonderful thing that the school's done. I just didn't know if there was a way to recoup some of that from CARES Act or any other.
So unfortunately, there is not. The good news with the School Lunch program is that DESI reimbursed regardless of if the student or family was a free or reduced lunch eligible, so we did see some income from families who wouldn't normally get free or reduced lunch. The way that the grants that we've received so far are written, they can't be used to offset lost revenue in any kind of revolving fund. They also cannot be used for any expenses that are budgeted already. So all of these things that happened last year, unfortunately, we can't do that. The other thing that we try to avoid with, and these are all considered grants, and one thing that we try to avoid with grants is there is a requirement with Mass Teachers Association, or I'm sorry, Mass Retirement System, to pay 9% of any salary that is paid from a grant into the teacher retirement. So grant funding is limited, and we try not to lose that 9% of that salary on top of it from a grant. So we try to do non-salary-related expenditures or stipends because stipends are not pensionable.
Right.
Unfortunately, no, we can't recoup any of that from COVID funding.
Just curious.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on '20 before I continue on? Okay, so '21, I did send you the general fund July expense report. I didn't send you the School Choice numbers yet because I'm still uploading the budget based on what we agreed upon, and then some additional expenses that we're going to talk about here, but I sent you the July report for general fund. There's nothing concerning. The only account that I'm really keeping an eye on at this point, if you look at that report, function code, I believe it's 4220 under Buildings and Maintenance. The line for general repairs is already used at about 40%, so that flagged me that we're, you know, a month in the school, and we've already used that amount. And what I've learned in conversation with our facilities director is that we pay for the energy management system expenditure out of that line, which is about $7,300. So I think moving forward, that's something that we're going to want to talk about if we want to move that money to a different, or that expense to a different line so that the expense that's meant for building repairs, the budget that's meant for building repairs, actually can repair the building. This is more of a maintenance program. They come in and, you know, assess it and fix it if needed, but it's a lot of money to take right off the top July 1 from our repairs line. So just something to think about moving forward.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're going to move on here to fiscal year '21 School Choice. So in the report that I gave you, there was total expenditures of $460,000. That includes $45,000 for COVID-related expenditures that were not budgeted when we built the budgets in the spring. That money has not been spent yet. I only have it in there as a placeholder at this point. In the event that we use all of the grant funding, this gives us something guaranteed to fall back on that we're not going to use for any other need and really hold that money in a safe spot for us. So I wanted you to know that I added those funds in there for COVID expenditures. The other challenge here with School Choice for '21 is we took a hit in '20, as I explained previously, with the enrollment and the tuition. We're going to take an additional hit in '21. Tina looked very closely at the roster for the end of '20 that the DESI would use to project our '21 revenues, and the kids coming in do not offset the kids going out. So we're looking at a $65,000 loss in School Choice for '21 as well. So between the two years, we're down quite a bit of money in School Choice. It's, I think, about $110,000 less between the two years from what we had planned on, and we're looking at ending the year, even with those expenses, right around $900,000 as it stands right now. I'm going to be completely honest that we're going to need that money for additional expenses. You'll learn more as I continue through, but we have some tough position we're in with a couple of these revolving funds.
Okay.
As it stands right now, good spot, but more to be discussed. Early Childhood revolving is one of the accounts of the funds that we need to pay attention to. Oh, David, go ahead, yes, of course.
I'm sorry. You just said something that confused me a little bit. You talked about the outflow of choice money and the inflow based on students coming and going from our district. But we don't account for that in our School Choice fund on this paper, do we? Because I thought the outgoing...
Let me clarify that. What I'm referring to is the students who choice in who are leaving Deerfield Elementary, whether they're sixth graders and graduated, or they moved on. I'm not referring to the sending students out of district.
Got you, I missed that, sorry, okay.
No, no problem, that's a good point of clarification.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Early Childhood revolving fund. So revenues were down from last year, even though we are starting off the year with almost $20,000 in existing revenue. Our projections for this year are significantly lower than what we went into the budget planning process with. We're looking at an enrollment of only 14 students, and not all of those students would be paying tuition because our special education students, we have to offer free services to. So we're only looking at $14,000 in revenue, and that's certainly significantly less than what we would have planned for our preschool programs in Deerfield. Expenses do not change, however, even though our tuition source is going down. We still need the same teachers, we have IAs planned. So we're looking at, at the end of '21, the way the budget is built right now, a loss in the Early Childhood program of $122,000. So this is where I was saying, we're going to need that School Choice money. It's, you know, beyond a bummer that our student count is down and we're losing revenue, but we're starting off good, and we've still got a good amount in there.
Are we seeing that, and maybe Tina could answer this too, are we seeing the low number of students signed up based on just the number of kids available or based on COVID?
I don't want to speak too much about the number of kids signed up because I can't speak to that, but what I know about this budget is that we have a limited capacity that we can take for preschool kids based on EPC and DESI regulations, yeah.
Right, got it, okay.
I don't think it has anything to do with the kids that wanted to come to school.
Right, we could take a lot more. There's a lot more people that want to come, we just don't have the space to be able to do it.
Exactly.
New environment, okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's...
So we are going to have to make some decisions on where to pay this staffing from. We could look at the general fund and see what position vacancies we have there because we do have some position vacancies there. Tina may need to fill some of those, but we've kind of been holding off on hiring at this point. So her and I will have to have some discussions about that, or we could always use the School Choice funds, which, thank goodness, we have available to us. Long-term, this is not just a problem for fiscal year '21. This is a problem for '22 and beyond because if we don't replenish this fund in any way, all of these expenditures are going to have to continue to be paid from a different revenue source. And we do not know what enrollment looks like for next school year, which seems far away, but in reality, it's not, and it's things that we need to start thinking about.
So, and if we don't have, if we're still limited by the space, that doesn't change?
No, unless something changes with the guidelines, you know, if we get a vaccine and we can increase numbers, yeah, we could be in the same predicament next school year.
If we had a bigger room, like if we, hypothetically, we dropped a gigantic inside room there, would we be able to bring in more people? It really has to do with the room and the space, right?
Yes.
Trevor, Tina, I have to keep my camera off because my internet is a little spotty where I am.
Yep.
It also has to do with the model too, like half-days and the availability of families that are able to join in on our schedule, if you will. So I'm sure it's very convenient for them.
Right, if we were full-time, it'd be a lot different.
Any other questions about Early Childhood before I continue on?
Nope, that was good, thank you.
Okay, so Special Education revolving fund. Revenue is as we anticipate based on the budget in the spring. There's not a whole lot to report here. We are expending out more than we're bringing in, however, we're starting with $82,000. So we're looking at ending the year, assuming no changes, which we always know that this is one of those kind of funds that fluctuates based on the needs of the community. But we're looking at about $70,000 remaining in the Special Education Fund at the end of FY '21. So nothing terrible to report there.
Quick question, though. There was a concern with a possible out-of-district placement. Is that no longer a concern or... For Special Education?
Yeah, Ken, I don't think that's any longer a concern. I think we are housing up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good. Just wanted to check.
Okay, School Lunch revolving is the last we're going to discuss for fiscal year '21 at this time. As I said earlier, we're starting '21 with almost $26,000. Like the Early Childhood revolving fund, School Lunch is going to be problematic for Deerfield Elementary. We, again, don't know what meals are going to look like. Even with students returning to school in the hybrid model, we're not sure how many are actually going to choose to have School Lunch versus bringing their own. DESI could also change the plans. They could extend this waiver where they're offering free lunches to everyone for a longer amount of time. There's a lot up in the air with this. But right now, we still have $56,000 in salaries and wages that we need to pay from the School Lunch revolving fund, plus food costs and overhead for that program. So just looking at wages, we would be at a loss by the end of the year of $25,000. So as we discussed with Early Childhood, we are going to need to have some other funding sources and make some decisions on where to pay our School Lunch staff moving forward. And I'll have more information on that. You know, Mary and I are in close communication about, you know, what do we need for staffing? What are we thinking we need for food? And, you know, it's been difficult because the plans keep changing and evolving day by day, and sometimes hour by hour, and, you know, we're doing the best that we can to come up with numbers. I think probably we're going to be into at least mid-October before we have a real idea of what the revenue is going to look like in this account, if not a little bit longer than that. And, you know, we're going to have to just move some things around based on the existing issues we have with the finances for School Lunch. Any questions about that? Okay, so I mean, I think that we've had to take in some difficult news today. I think we anticipated that this was going to be a challenge. Certainly not the best position we want to be in in some of these revolving funds that do support our faculty and staff, but at the same time, I'm glad that we do have resources from School Choice to be able to help support these programs. And again, that long-term discussion is something we're going to have to continue for future years. So the final, oh, Ken, do you have anything on that before I talk about the grant funding?
No, I'm in complete agreement. I just think we're in, you know, we're in such uncharted waters here that the plan that you've outlined to me and the level of detail you've given us is very reassuring. We know we've got some funds that we can use to cover these uncertainties for this year and it looks like for the foreseeable fiscal year following, when hopefully things will start to clarify and the waters won't be quite as muddy so that planning for school years will be a little bit easier than it's obviously been during this timeframe. So the work you and your staff are doing is phenomenal, Shelley, we thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, quickly, I'll close out with the grant information related to COVID-19. So Deerfield Elementary at this time is receiving roughly $162,000 in grant funding. The first source of funding for this was from the Municipal Cares Act that we submitted expenditures for in fiscal year 20. We put in for $65,500 in technology for the one-to-one initiative, and that has been fully funded. I'm happy to report Casey did let me know that we received all of our funding there. There's another small amount of money coming from that first funding source for PPE and sanitation equipment. Then we have a second grant from elementary and secondary education. It's an emergency relief fund. The award for this was based on Title I funding. So Deerfield is receiving $26,651. This has been intended to be for COVID-related expenses. However, if we are in a situation where we do need to fund something that was previously budgeted, we can use it for things that would normally qualify under Title I. However, we are trying to keep it COVID-related because the amount of expenditures is, you know, more than we can even think about. Every day, something new comes up. And the last grant so far for COVID relief is a coronavirus relief fund, also through DESI. What they did was award an additional $225 per student based on foundation enrollment, which is our Deerfield students, Deerfield residents. So that awarded Deerfield Elementary $69,751. So of that $162,000, we've spent around 81 and have about 81 and a half-ish left to spend. So what we will do is spend down all of the grant money. I will be meeting with Tina in the coming week, if not two weeks, to plan out the rest of that spending to make sure that we're utilizing that money to the greatest potential. And then from there, we have that $45,000 that is earmarked in School Choice. Any grant questions? Or COVID questions in general? Related to finances?
Careful what you ask for.
I know.
No.
Okay.
Job, thank you.
No.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Shelley. And as I said, thank you. Thank you to your team, please, let them know our appreciation. So at this point in time, we're moving on the agenda to public comments. And just as a, as a heads up, if there are people, and we have about 79 people participating at this point in time, and roughly 65 or 6 of them would be the general public, I think. So if you have a desire to make a public comment at this stage, I ask you to do, want to, please, raise your hand on the chat, in the chat area, and just say you're interested in commenting, and I will recognize people in order as they come. We ask that you only use the chat area to raise your hand. We don't want dialogue taking place after people or as people are making their comments, and that is not the purpose. When you're recognized, I will call your name, and you will have two minutes to comment. And we will try and stick to about... we will try and stick to about a two two-minute timeline and uh go from there. So please, as I said, raise your hand in the um area. So I see Andrea Callahan has raised a hand twice. But I figured that was the the intent the first time around. So Andrea Callahan, if you know how to unmute, please unmute and we'll take your comment.
Try.
You're there.
Hi. Hi, I'm Andrea Callahan. Hi, I'm an IA at Deerfield Elementary. I've been there about seven, eight years. I have a master's degree. I make eighteen dollars an hour. I, when you look at me, I don't know if you can see me. I am the face of COVID in your employee. Last February, mid-February, a child who had just gotten off a plane who was very, very sick sneezed on the side of my face. I ran in the bathroom. I put soap, tried to get it off. Eight days later, I got sick. And on March ninth, I was diagnosed with COVID um at my doctor's office and my son. By then, he had caught it too. For two months, I was really, really, really sick. Um I should have been hospitalized, but I couldn't because I'm a single mom of a kid with autism and epilepsy. And so the doctors agreed to check in twice a day. They gave me nebulizer, prednisone, rescue inhaler, emergency inhaler, twenty days of prednisone, all sorts of meds. And by the skin of my teeth, I was able to stay home. But I coughed up blood. I vomited. Um there were days I laid in my vomit because I couldn't get, I couldn't change. Today, I went to my physical appointment and I found out that my doctor told me seventy percent of the people my age who have COVID end up with structural heart abnormalities. So now I'm getting um checked for an enlarged heart. I continue to cough all night and a lot of the day. Um and I'm having, I have pains in my rights, my right lung. So they're going to screen. I have a long history of pneumonia. I already had star tissue. And so now they're going to screen me for lung um damage as well. You didn't know, school committee, Darius, you didn't know about this back in February and March. But you know about it now. I don't want to see my coworkers go through this because there was one night where I was gasping for breath. I was in respiratory distress and I was pretty close. And I don't, I don't want to see children go through this. I don't want to be organizing pictures of staff people, my coworkers, my friends and students, children that I love and care for. I don't want to be organizing photos of them on flags on people's lawns to honor them from COVID twenty. So it's it's your, it's your turn. Do the right thing. I'm the face of COVID. My life is different now. I hope I get good news. I'll know in five weeks. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Andrea. And I'm so sorry to hear of everything that you've had to endure um during this pandemic. It's, as you, as you point out, it's it's just un- unbelievable what can, what can happen. Um so Sean, Sean Duratt would be next.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, my name is Sean Duratt and I am a parent of a rising fifth grader at Deerfield Elementary. And I have another child who just graduated from sixth grade at DES. Andrea, thank you for being brave enough to share your story with this wider group. Um I also work as a teacher and a school administrator in Greenfield. And I'm here to speak up in support of the excellent DES educators and staff. I trust the professionalism, the work ethic, and the expertise of all of our DES teachers. And as a parent, I'm deeply concerned about employee morale if our teachers are not validated and respected as the experts in their field. I urge the school committee to do everything they can to listen to and support our teachers, whether the concerns are individual or collective through the union negotiation. Thank you for your time and for your service on the school committee.
Thank you, Sean. And I I I would also take this opportunity to thank you for the correspondence you have been sending in as well. So Aja, I think I pronounced it right this time. Aja Seron.
You did. Thanks. Um I'm Aja Seron and I co-chair the CPAC. We wanted to start by thanking the administrators and principals for adjusting their reopening plans to follow both the CPAC's recommendations and the guidance put out by DESI on special education. The slower phased reopening with special education coming in first gives the most vulnerable students a chance to adjust to the new environment this fall. CPAC families are thankful for this consideration. We deeply appreciate your change of course to include more students in the high knees category as well and not just the substantially separate IEP students that was initially presented at the Sunderland meeting last week. Having adaptive PPE available to special education students and staff along with the options for temporary shift to substantially separate classrooms increases the safety for our media students. Providing the proposed technology options will improve special education students' ability to access content in both models. The CPAC values the assurances that the district will be able to quickly remedy the backlog of IEP evaluations and annual meetings from last year, complete all of the upcoming annual meetings and any amendment meetings that are requested this fall. In addition to providing IEP evaluations to students who are suspected of having new disabilities like anxiety or depression resulting from the pandemic. We are hopeful that the information provided in the past four school committee meetings will be compiled into a special education fact sheet and readily available to families as quickly as possible. Because as all CPAC parents know, nothing is guaranteed until we have it in writing. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Aja, and thank you to uh CPAC and all the concerned families in that organization for your your vocal and uh, you know, well-intended feedback to us on our reopening plans. So I believe that is it for our public comment at this point in time. So with that being said, we will move to new business. The latest update on state guidance for community data metrics for COVID-safe schools. And I believe Mr. Modesto.
Yes, sir. Um I'm going to have um our nurse leader, Meg Burge, kind of give the overview of our matrix that we've been putting together. For those of you who ran other calls, you've probably seen this before. Not this committee, so here we go. Um I'm going to present her her brief uh slideshow.
Hi there. So um these are metrics that um we have been working on. This presentation incorporates uh what has been provided to us from the state. Um and, you know, in later in the in the presentation, I'll I'll address this, but I want to just be clear that decisions um were based on these data will be made um by the Board of Health in consultation with the district um and where appropriate with other local boards of health as we move uh as as, yeah, that's it. So um I'm starting all of my um presentations just with this sort of reminder um because these really are the key um components for health and safety for all of us in any setting that we're in. Um it really is masks when you're outside of the home, maintaining physical distancing, um hand hygiene, and then staying home if you're unwell. Um I just I like to start with those. That's it. Um in in trying to um in in working on our data metrics, um those of you who've seen other discussions and our on our draft protocols, these these have changed. Uh there are a lot of data out there and it seemed important to narrow down the data that we were going to rely on. Um and also make sure that that data um were readily available and um you know, easily interpretable. Um so we have two source, two um dashboard points from the Department of Public Health, their weekly um data and um their daily data. And I'll talk more about what we pull from those um sources. Uh the New York Times has an interactive map. It counts that are county level data. Uh and the Harvard Global Health Institute has an interactive dashboard as well. Um that has county level data, including counts that um we can use to calculate some of our metrics. So the these next two slides are kind of a snapshot of what the state released um last Tuesday for their color-coded metrics. Um these are uh, these are based on um average daily cases per hundred thousand. Um and that's a rolling average over fourteen days. These data are updated by the state every Wednesday um and are shown on a on a map that is available um in the weekly report and also lower down on that same page. Uh and uh they've added an interactive piece to that map that you can hover over a town and get more details about uh the statistics for that town. As you can see, you know, the they're they're looking at anything greater than eight per hundred thousand. Um red, four to eight, yellow, less than four is green. Their shaded part of the map is um, it's a different statistic that they're presenting on the same map, which is fewer than five total cases over the past fourteen days. And they, that is relevant, and it is relevant for smaller communities with small populations and very few cases. Um but um yeah, I'll leave it at that. Next. I I set my timer and I'm trying not to go down the rabbit holes that I can easily go down on with this data. Um so I want to be clear that this slide is showing their recommendations, the guidance from DESI and the and the command center. Or that greater than eight cases per hundred thousand would uh eight remote learning. Between four and eight would be uh hybrid or remote. Um remote, if there were extenuating circumstances. And four, they say full in-person or hybrid. Again, um hybrid would be extenuating circumstances, which they they don't define, though they do refer to uh local boards of health, looking at other data, looking at trend data um to make appropriate decisions. Um and, you know, I I think that no, there's not been any discussion where we've been talking that I'm aware of, this district of full remote. So that's I I unbolded them in my presentation because they're really not part of our discussion at this time. Um so when I was, when I was looking at the data that we had, when I was looking at the data that were available for the state, it seemed important to sort of rank them. Uh the primary indicators are going to be ones that uh could trigger a fourteen-day closure without question. Those are data um by the Department of Public Health. It's statewide or regional data based on large uh numbers um and fairly stable. indicators. Um that's going to be local or regional data. It would, they would, they would likely trigger a short-term closure to allow the Board of Health uh the district um to do additional assessment um and and seek additional data. Uh and the last category is, I I named tertiary indicators. So those are things that would trigger would trigger a level of concern. And so that would be a conversation with the local board of health, whether um one town, the four towns, you know, likely, given our district. Uh also regional data. Um and it would again be um an opportunity to sort of reassess and look at the whole picture um to determine what's next. So specifically, the primary indicators are, um we'd be looking at that um DPH uh metric. Uh red, yellow, green. We would be looking at um the seven-day weighted average of positive tests. That's available in the daily dashboard. It's gen- it's supposed to be updated by four each day. Um it's currently one point four percent for the um and then we are waiting for DPH uh and DESI um regional data. And I'm in a number of advocacy efforts, um as are many public health nurses and others to um to get regional data, so to get county level data, um to get school district level data, so that we could have aggregate data. The one um color-coded metric is um when you're looking at the the population, you know, counts per hundred thousand population. Uh they don't report numbers for towns um below a certain population. And those numbers really are meant for larger um municipalities. Um and um so so we 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 often don't get the data that those um and and we have small numbers, so it just makes it less stable. Um there's seventy thousand people in Franklin County, so um calculate something for Deerfield is is not, not, not so appropriate. Secondary indicators, um so this is something we can calculate from the data reported um in the weekly report. The confirmed COVID cases in the previous fourteen days. Uh looking at less than twenty-five for the entire county, um so the twenty-six towns. And that would include data from settings that are really um contain discrete congregate settings such as a skilled nursing facility, um Franklin County, Dale. Uh schools, I would would not be excluded from that count. Uh generally, certainly public schools, day schools would not be. Uh um percent positive, less than three percent for Franklin County. We can calculate that again using the DPH data. Uh three percent is the recommendation, recommended threshold by the Harvard Global Health Institute. Uh and seems for our, at a local level, more appropriate, um given our population and our rural connected communities. And then doing a combined Franklin and Hampshire uh data, um looking at less than ten cases per day or seventy cases per week per hundred thousand population, again excluding congregate uh settings. Uh and that data, um that those numbers, threshold numbers are based on the Harvard Global Health Institute um report. So the tertiary indicators um that we're we're wanting to work with or looking at trends. Uh um so, you know, are there, are there increasing trends in our primary or our secondary data? Uh um, you know, it's important to note that if we see uh, you know, if case numbers across the state are increasing, you know, it's it's going to impact uh our decision. Uh that trend will impact our decision and and we wouldn't, I I don't imagine, wait to hit five percent if the trend is clearly headed that direction. Internal monitoring of data would be uh looking at illness dismissals within a building. Um one point nine percent of the expected census. Um and one point nine is the baseline for influenza-like illnesses for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty uh flu season for New England. Just, it's a way that um public health data are um, it's a measure to to monitor uh an uptick in illnesses that are not uh necessarily diagnosed. So it's it's a flag for us. And then also a greater than ten percent of the um expected census any given day. And that would be staff and students if they're out, that that would be a flag that would um would trigger a conversation and an assessment of other data. And then, you know, if we're hearing from the local board of health, um either for Deerfield or our surrounding towns, our district towns or other Franklin County towns uh that they're seeing um increased positive test results in our area. Uh that would be information that would um would definitely trigger a conversation um and a reassessment of um the situation. And then the closure scenarios, these decisions are made by the local board of health. And then the closure scenarios, these decisions are made by the local Board of Health. I want to acknowledge that we have board health members on this call, and I appreciate your taking the time, making the time to be here. So a long-term closure, you know, greater than 14 days, that, that would be when there's widespread transmission in the community. The primary indicators remain above the threshold levels with no, no sort of flattening of the curve or decrease. A 14-day district or building closure, that would be where we're seeing, again, community spread. We have concern for that there was an instance of in-school transmission. And then, once the district closed, it would only reopen if the primary indicators were below the threshold and the Board of Health felt that the other measures were, they felt comfortable with what else they were seeing in terms of the data and as much as we are able to, you know, from conversations with, with surrounding towns and districts. And then the short-term closures, we're looking, would be sort of a one-to-three or a three-to-five day closure. And that's, that's really to sort of basically put the brakes on and do a full assessment of the data, see what's happening, get the information needed to make an appropriate decision about the next step, whether the school would reopen after that short-term closure or remain closed, would be determined by the local Board of Health. They could decide to, to extend that closure for 14 days or longer, if the data indicated that was the appropriate, safe decision to make for our communities. I almost got it under 10 minutes, Darius. You're muted, sir.
Sorry about, do we have any questions from committee members? Is there any of the numbers? I, I don't have any comments at this point in time, so.
I don't, I, this is Trevor McDaniel. I, I just really wanted to thank Meg and everybody that she's been working with, all the local boards of health, to try and come up with kind of really succinct plan on how we would look at closures or openings and all the indicators we'd be looking at. And it's a, it's an immense amount of work that, that Meg and everybody's been doing to try and find, you know, the right mix of things to be looking at and following. And I just thank you so much for all that, all that work.
Yes. Yes, Meg, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so, um, next we would have planning and scheduling for hybrid and remote models on the agenda.
Yeah, so that brings me back in. So basically, you're, you're the, I think you're the last school committee to be unveiling of this, and so that, we start going individual school committees, that's how information, unfortunately, gets kind of rolled out. Right now, basically, I met with the, I have trouble spitting this out every time, probably because it's, you know, not news that I want to be sending out. I met with the administrative team early on Monday, and basically, we kind of mapped out the timelines in order to get things rolling and really need to, to slow down our slow rollout of the hybrid model. Basically, what I'm asking for is to move forward between two-week remote to start. The reasons on that is, you know, there are several. The first one being, there was concerns from the Board of Health, starting in that particular week, following the Labor Day weekend. Really, we've seen the uptick after the last major holiday weekend and just open up schools on that particular weekend with all the other anxieties about opening up school. You know, I was asked if I could push it off a few days. On top of that, we've had, you know, I am negotiating with the union and also working on accommodations for staff members, and that process is taking longer to communicate out to what combinations can be made, staff members applying for different combinations and working that into.
Definitely, we both lost for Meg. I had a long shot, and I am so grateful.
Took care of her. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about that.
So, so that being, you kind of brought some humor to it. Thank you. So the, and basically, you know, trying to work those things out, we're also getting our buildings ready and, and working with different contractors and the timelines on that. There's a lot of different things having to come together perfectly at the right time. You know, me, myself, as the leader of this district, I, you know, I put a timeline at the beginning of August that I thought we could make. I think I was being ambitious and going to the buffet line, you know, with, with big eyes that we could pull this off. There's just a lot of, a lot of factors, a lot of human factors as well, where you can't just, you can't just get it done, you can't roll it out like we do every school year. And so that's, you know, my reason for a recommendation of, you know, slowing it down. I was going to have Kim jump on, just, I was going to present what the slowdown model looks like. And if you indulge with that, and Kim will, we'll go through it rather quickly, so I know it's getting, now, that was what I just showed, that just shows you how tired I am. Let's not do that. Let's talk about the slowdown model here. All right. Can we see that instead? No.
Not yet.
Guys, you know what? I've, you know, I've only done about 12 hours of school committee this week, so if you think I'm joking, I'm not. All right. So here we are.
Thank you, Darius. Do you mind just making, oh, it's perfect, I can see it perfectly.
There we go. I made it big already. There we go.
It's just perfect. So yes, Darius talked about slowing this down a little bit by a two-week period of time, and this is the draft schedule for this. So if you take a look at August 26th, those in that pink color are the 10 days that we're giving to the teachers for professional development. And there's a lot of different trainings going on that day, and there's events being made. So those are the first 10 days that brings us to September 9th. Then the official first day of school is on September 10th. And as Darius mentioned, given the holiday on Labor Day, it was recommended to us to do those first days in terms of remote orientations. So those two days in green will both be orientations for students and families to become used to the newness of our school. Then here's the week that Darius is really talking about, it's September 14th through the 18th, and those will be full remote days for most students. And we're asking our special program students and our high needs students to start on those days in a half-day program. Down the center of the color, you're going to see this, the center of the calendar, you're going to see a purple blocks. Those Wednesdays will be remote days for all students for a half-day model, and in the afternoon, we'll have staff professional development. And as you can tell, and we've been talking a lot about it, there's a lot of professional development that needs to be done. That following week, it's, we're adding more of the vulnerable learners, so that's that kind of orangey salmon color there, so we're able to address the needs of the most vulnerable learners. And as you know, the definition for vulnerable learners is, is wider than just students and IEPs, and Tina and her staff are really looking at who's coming in on those days. Then on the 24th, we get to start that schedule that we originally planned for you. So that was that two-week time, and those, that's when we start Cohort A and Cohort B. In the beginning, we would like half the children in Cohort A to come in one day, half the children in Cohort B, and then the other half on the 28th and 29th. And to do that, we can really get to know the kids, re-meet, re-beet together, do the social-emotional check-in. We haven't seen these children in a long time, and a lot of things have happened, and we want to be able, so we can connect personally, to do our responsive classrooms, and just to really be there for each other. Then on that blue box, that October 1st, that's when we have that Cohort A, Cohort B back and forth. And those are colored blue, because as you know, we're trying to go from the half-day model to the full day, based on the gates being open. So the calendar runs that way all the way through, with every other day with Wednesdays off. And then, obviously, we heard a lot about the health indicators and when we can open the gates to, to make, help us make the decisions for that. So that's the main changes in the calendar and the slowdown that includes both a remote start as well as increased opportunities for our special population students.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Darius?
Any questions regarding that, that, you know, so basically, our timing, I, I, once we kind of released this, then we've had parents asking, you know, what's this mean? And what's the rollout of this? So basically, my, my rollout of this is to be, is presenting it to the school committees. We also sent it on to teachers yesterday. It is like we're creating the documentation as fast as we're, we're beating it out, you know what I mean? And just as you probably heard, you heard about maybe last night, when I got it ready for school committee for, that we met last night. Frontier is also doing the same thing, but they're doing a different kind of rollout. They have different parameters and that kind of thing, different, you know, students and that, that sort of thing. So that's the idea. Our game plan to communicate with parents is, is going to be, you know, we're working it through with teachers right now, kind of, kind of run it by school committee as well. And by early next week, getting those calendars out and additional informations to parents about, you know, the following, you know, for this year coming up. So I do, you know, I know parents are anxious to get their schedules set, and I apologize, we're, we're going as fast as we can, you know, to schedule all these things, there's a lot of different moving parts, you know, and to get students back in the building and create a hybrid model, which is, you know, I've been, I've been pushing forward. We also have to create a remote model at the same time, so we're creating two teaching models at the same time, and, you know, without a whole lot of increase in staffing, so what's working with staff and to create those kind of things, it's complicated. And so, and it's a lot of work ahead of us there.
Well, I, I know that back when we took our vote, Darius, thank you, continued thanks to you, your administrative team, to faculty and staff that are working hand-in-hand with you to develop these various models and, and plans. But I know that back when we took the vote, in the joint committee meeting, or, I'm sorry, in the individual committee meetings that were a joint committee meeting, that my concerns were that we are voting a plan that provides flexibility and the ability to pivot, the ability to adapt, but also recognize that we had three weeks of what was going to be incredibly intense work for you and your team to make plans for the opening. The fact that we're rolling back in concert with input from our LBOH, as well as, you know, faculty, staff, administration, I, I think is a good thing. Certainly, with everything that will be going on at the end of August in Western Massachusetts, particularly in Deerfield, with three schools coming back into, into session, three independent schools coming back into session and bringing in borders from all over the country and all over the world, and in addition, bringing students in, day students in from Hampshire, Franklin, and Hamden, and other counties, on into Vermont and New Hampshire, et cetera. Caution is, is the watchword as, as we move forward, very definitely. So I continue to thank you for your efforts. Anybody?
I would.
Trevor?
Yeah, I would just like to, to thank Darius, too. I, I do, you know, I, I feel as a school committee, we should give Darius and the administration and faculty as much, you know, flexibility they, that they need, if they see the need to kind of roll this out a little slower. I know people are anxious to get back to school, and they're, like, like Darius just said, they're, they're, the families are trying to plan, what are they going to do? But if, if it takes a few more days, a couple more weeks to make sure that he feels comfortable that he can bring our, our kids back and our faculty back safely, and it gives the teachers more time for professional development and make sure that they feel comfortable teaching in this environment and they, they feel safe. So I, I just think it, I'm totally in support of the calendar laid out here. I think, I know Carolyn had, had, you know, had also mentioned that, you know, after 4th of July, you could see a slight uptick in, as people go away on vacation or whatever, the end of the summer, everybody's coming back. I think that's really smart to just give a little bit of more cushion there for, for everybody to, to come back, get settled in, and, and be ready to go back to school and just give a little bit of more cushion there for that. That, that seems smart to do. So I, I'm just, I'm in full support of this. It, it makes sense to me. So whatever, whatever he needs to get moving, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'd just like a little clarification on the, what would they, high needs versus vulnerable learners. I see at the bottom, it has high needs, listing a lot of different groups, including early learners, grades PK to five. How is that different from vulnerable learners? Is there a group at the elementary school level that is not considered a vulnerable learner at this point? Is, is sixth grade different? Is there? And I know you're still working on the details, but if there's any more input on that, I'd like to hear it.
The information on the bottom of the calendar, that's what's in DESI guidance, and it's copied verbatim, gives an idea of what they're determining as a vulnerable learner and special populations. And then each building is bringing it back to define it, to think about the kids and to do the programming for all the individuals that have found different kinds of difficulties. If it's access, if, of the curriculum, or other issues can all fall under that category. And it gives the principals and the staff at each school kind of a good wide net to capture those students that we have concerns about and want to support in the best way that we can.
And then the last part, Carrie, if you may, I know, regarding pre-K, pre-K, you know, public schools are only required to provide public education to, to pre-K for those with special needs, or, so while we have a mixture in ours, so when you're talking about they are considered a vulnerable group, because through the public school model, we're, you know, pre-K is, is set that way. So they're looking at them as a vulnerable group.
Anyone else have anything to say? I.
I haven't, sorry, can't.
Oh.
So if we're looking at vulnerable learners going through October, we're thinking there'll be a group at DES that will not be starting until after that? Is that correct?
There will be a group at DES starting in, during that vulnerable learning time, Carrie. Is that what you're asking?
No, I mean, are there kids who are not considered vulnerable learners, who will not be starting until November or later?
No, no, the, the, no, when we, when we start, yeah, those cohorts that we're talking about bringing back are all students, broken down into smaller groups to roll out those days. And understanding rolling out those days, there's, you know, we've got new patterns, we had new student patterns, and the reason why we're doing smaller groups is we got to figure out all the different kind of things. We're kind of creating a new school in a way, in the sense of how we're doing business. And so we got to, if we start, we're going to smaller group, I think teachers are going to be far more comfortable in then troubleshooting those. And that's the other reason why they're half-days, because they need second half-day to troubleshoot how we're doing, you know, basic safety procedures and classes with, you know, the six-foot spacing and, and, you know, how we're doing from mask breaks to, you know, you know, activity times and those kind of things. A lot more thought has to go in there, so we're creating more time within that. So that's the, I know that there's a frustrating side, I know parents have to be frustrated at, you know, the slower rollout, but that's, that's the, that's the logic behind it.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Certainly, Darius, you just touched on, oh, go ahead, David. I see you're unmuted, David. Were you going to speak, or?
Uh, no, no, no.
Okay. You know, it's, it's been a, it's been a long summer. It's been a frustrating summer for everyone involved. You know, we've seen a degree of divisiveness within the DES community, the Union 38, frontier regional communities, that is not something that we're used to. And I think, or, you know, I'm, I'm appreciative of all of the input we've received. My decisions, and, you know, I can only speak for myself, but the way I approach the decision-making is a balance between the professional opinions provided by our staff, faculty and staff, the professional opinions provided by our administrators and state health leaders and local boards of health. It's a, also a consideration of the needs of the Deerfield community. It's also a consideration of the needs of the Deerfield community, the needs that are met by our educators, by the elementary school, by our school systems, in helping this community function. It also looks at the families and the impacts that this horrible pandemic has had on all of us and how we can move forward. So I continue to support the hybrid plan. I'm pleased that the three weeks has led not, you know, has led to a more gradual rollout. It gives us an opportunity to do some remote early on to see what, how that's going. It gives us the ability to, you know, phase in reoccupation of the school. It gives our faculty and staff opportunities to work with small groups of children and particularly, you know, some of the more challenging population in establishing new safety protocols and new standards and practices within the schools. So I'm encouraged. I know it's got to be frustrating for parents at home, especially single, you know, single fam, single head of households, dual working families, you know, childcare logistics. I know it's frustrating. We're trying to work through it. I know Darius and his team are trying to make things as workable as possible for everyone involved. And I hope that this community can come together now and work to see this through safely for everyone involved. So, thank you. That takes, does that take us through planning and scheduling for hybrid and remote models? We're down now to, go ahead.
I guess one more question, just to clear up. When we get out to October 1st and on into October, we have, you know, Cohort B goes for a full day. Say, you know, I'll take the week of the 19th. So Cohort A goes for a full day on Monday. Tuesday Cohort B goes. Then there's the remote day, early, you know, remote day on Wednesday, and then we go A and B again. On the days that Cohort A is not being educated, will they be doing remote on the following day? So the 20th, so Cohort A on the 20th, are they working remotely or are they not being, doing education today?
Excellent question, Trevor. So in this phase, students are in the building two days a week and receiving remote education three days a week. So students will always be active and involved in the curriculum that we've built in either in person or through the remote channels.
That's what I was hoping to hear. Thank you. That's great.
One other question occurs to me coming out of this. Faculty and staff that are high risk, you know, and I think particularly of that, you know, the Andrea Callahan's statement and, you know, recitation of what she's gone through since February and March. Is there provision within this that they are working remotely in some capacity or able to work remotely in some capacity to fulfill their obligations? Or what, I'm just, from a staffing perspective, wondering what's out there, so?
Yep. So, yeah, so staff members can apply for several different types of leave. We, Shelley put on a presentation earlier this week to staff members could come on to understand the different types of leaves that are open to them from, from the, from ADA leave to a FF-CRA leave to an extended, an extended family. All the nacrons, I'm, it's getting late. But so basically kind of explaining with those things out. We didn't ask people to apply if they didn't think they had the documentation because we wanted to know what we had to work with there and what kind of accommodations we can do, whether the accommodations are remote, whether there's also childcare issues that we're working through. You know, we have a lot of members with children who also, who have children and who may be attending our district or neighboring district that no longer is open as well. So we have our own, you know, it's kind of in and on itself. You know, we have parents in our own district who can't provide childcare and go to work and are also teachers. And so kind of, you can see how that is, the multiplication of those issues and as those issues, that's one of the reasons, again, the overwhelmness that my administration has done, has had, is those things are coming in, we're trying to figure out how are we going to deliver the education in the hybrid model? And we're really looking at, you know, doing a lot of team kind of, you know, approaches on that, you know, because we may have some teachers that are teaching remotely, who just because you're teaching remotely doesn't mean they're only teaching remote students. They could actually be popping into the classroom remotely to give a lesson with support from other adults in the classroom. So, you know, we do have some, you know, we have, you know, again, a master teacher who's, can work those kinds of things out. Because you got to remember that there, you know, the student, right now, the way the schedule's set is the student is in, is in the building two days a week and out teaching remotely three days a week. So there's a lot of remote teaching that's happening in this model, you know, the way we have it set up. So it's two thirds of their, of their education is still remote. So remote is really the emphasis. And then the getting the people in the, in the building in person is the follow-up, is the connecting of the details, is the social emotional and trying to move on that remote learning. So, that kind of answer?
Thank you. So. Any, anything else out there? Okay. So CPAC concerns and questions, new business.
Darius, you want me to just?
Sorry, I was, I was, there was someone making noise, I muted them. Um, yeah, so Aaron Baranew, our Director of Special Education, is going to talk a little bit about some of CPAC's, you know, questions and just kind of general overview what's happening this, this fall.
And I want to acknowledge Asia coming on as the co-chair of the CPAC earlier and the fact that this got on the agenda based upon a letter with concerns about the special education plan that was sent to school committee over a week ago. And we started to address that at the Sunderland School Committee and through all these school committee meetings in which we're all in, I think there's just sort of ongoing communication. And so there really has been sort of a change of, a change of focus or continued conversation through various school committee meetings, because it seems to be the forum we're all in lately. And I just wanted to note what you said, Ken, about the appreciation of input. And I think that's where I'm going to. And how in this time, it's so stressful that it's, it's easy to go to a place where it's divisive, but really, and to just recognize that we're all allies here and we're all working together to a common goal and that all the input that's given and all the communication that's given, it's just remarkable at the level of communication that's going on. And so I want to recognize the original letter that was sent to the CPAC a week ago that got this onto today's agenda, but also the ongoing communication by so many parties and so many moving parts. So the original, the concern that was expressed that was about special education planning with the idea that, you know, the hybrid model was coming out and the remote model was coming out, but what we were doing for special education and what I've said since Sunderland, and I know Asia and Holly and others have been known, five school committee listening to this, and we've kind of toned what we're doing. And that's why her, her letter earlier this morning, or her, ah, I'm tired, her letter earlier in this meeting. So some of the things that I just want to note that we're doing is ongoing communication and understanding that special education is a supplemental service. So special education students are general education students. So it was very important, as hard as it is to imagine, it was very important for us to have this model that we've had for a while now of the hybrid and the remote models and working to design those supplemental models, supplemental forms of service. And then there was the question of how we were defining the high need students. And that got a little complicated, maybe, with some of the things that I said at Sunderland in identifying that our schools are so inclusive that many of the school districts around us are identifying students, high needs of those that are in substantially separate programming, that means out of the general education environment over 60% of the time. But we are really noting that a lot of our students that would have been in special education, specialized programs or out of the general ed population are actually included. So we can't just, we're not just going to make a blanket statement that our high needs kids are just those kids in substantially separate programs. So administrators, principals, Tina, Elaine, faculty have all been discussing it and working with faculty and really looking at who are those high need students. And then we will be reaching out to families. I know, I'm looking at Tina's picture there, already been reaching out to families to get their input, to find out what changes, if anything's occurred, if there's been heightened anxiety or stress in the families, to find out what's new in those families and to take that into consideration. We will then put together a document after our faculty have time to talk about how and when those services will be provided, will be providing parents with a separate document to the IEP of exactly how and when the services and IEPs will be delivered. Again, that wouldn't be a change in the IEP unless through our conversation with parents or from knowledge from the faculty, that there's been such a significant change in student need, it warrants a change in the IEP, in which case we would hold IEP meetings. But what this all comes down to is a lot of communication, a lot of input from many different parties, continued communication. And it's very exciting and stressful and tiring. And one of the things that I'd like to just share as we move forward is we are all allies in this. And if we understand that we'd be coming from different directions or maybe have our different priorities or different input that we want to give, moving forward, if we just all assume good intent and share our input and our communication in ways, we can continue to just build a district in which we have an expansive and strong continuum of services for all students. So I thank the CPAC for their ongoing communication, to faculty, administrators, school committee for your work. And if you have any specific questions about special education and what we're doing, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions from the committee? I guess not. Are we moving to executive session, Darius, this evening?
If you'd like an update on negotiations, you are.
I think I can see most everybody, in terms of committee members, that are interested in an update. Mr. Sharp and Carrie and Mary and Trevor?
Sure.
Yes. Yeah, I would be.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So for the general community, we are going to be entering executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, teachers and instructional assistance. This will be a separate closed meeting. When we reconvene, we will be reconvening to take no actions, only to adjourn our general meeting. I want to thank all the public and attendees this evening for listening in and hearing all that's going on with our school community. I, I'm going to take one, one more moment to, to get on a podium, I guess, and just say a couple of things about community or continue to say things about community. As we've gone through this process, it's, we've had, you know, powerful emotional stories and happenings described by people such as Andrea Callahan this evening and earlier people. I, I can only say from, you know, from my perspective, our community, our school community really, you know, reaches out to provide support wherever we can. We're sorry to hear of these things. I, you know, I have family who have had COVID-19. I have a daughter who is a teacher who's wrestling with all of the issues that our faculty and staff are wrestling with. I, I fully get it. And I just, you know, as Karen said, I, I hope that our community can now start to build, build back and remove some of the divisiveness and continue to work together on this issue. And we hope that the world and the nation as well move forward and we get to get our arms around this thing as quickly as possible. So, sorry to get back on a podium for a while, but I will now entertain a motion unless someone else has comments. Absolutely.
Could I interrupt you for a second?
This is Greg Franceschi.
Franceschi.
Franceschi, sorry.
I am, I am, I thank all of you for what you're going through. I can't imagine how stressful it must be. I think that everybody in the community is really stressed out and anxious about this. And I just want to say something, and I also want to thank you for, you know, really reminding everybody to go and listen to each other. We all have our opinions and I think that mine are very emotional. I have a son who's in school and I'm worried, you know, I don't want him not to be in school. I don't want him to have a different education than all the other kids, or all the other kids in this class. But if you would consider, you know, just for a moment, a little exercise with me and the part of yourselves that realizes the absurdity of this situation. The world is 7.8 billion people, 783,000 people that have died, 175,000 people have died now in the United States. Our population is 382 million. 7.8 billion people, 783,000, 382 million. We're doing something wrong. And I feel like we're following leadership that doesn't make sense and ignoring our basic emotional intuitive understanding of the reality that none of us want to see any of our friends, teachers, or workers, anyone hurt. It doesn't have to be. From this, without having contact, without having everyone entering the building tested before they go into the building, we don't know who's bringing what into the building. So we're basically putting everyone into a Petri dish instead of keeping them safe in their homes and letting them survive the emotional trauma that it will cause them to be at home with their families or with support people, you know, compared to the emotional trauma of losing a parent or losing your, you know, a family member or friend. And I just feel like, you know, we're all on the same page in that concern, but we're forgetting that whoever's coming up with all the statistics about, you know, 5% and this and that, it's people. It's not, it's not percentage points. We're all, you know, on the same page with that, I think. So I want, I hope that you'll reconsider and give the teachers a chance to prepare to teach the kids remotely. They're going to need a lot of time and, and training in the next few weeks to be able to pull it off. Otherwise, it's going to be a big mess, just like it was in the spring, and you're going to lose kids because they're not going to be able to hold their attention because it's a very challenging thing to suddenly go from teaching a class full of kids that can ask you questions and interact with you and get encouraged in a very personal way to doing it through a computer. But there's, there've got to be, you know, there are obviously people who are doing, going to do it remotely, there are experts in our community who teach remotely already that we could learn from. And I just feel like we should be putting our 100% effort into trying to do a really good job of remote learning. And then, you know, in November or December, once things have hopefully improved in the, in the country as a whole and, you know, stayed stable in our area, we, you know, go back.
All right.
All I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you, Greg. So.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Executive, uh, with that said, uh, I will entertain the motion to enter executive session pursuant to End Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, teachers and instructional assistance.
I'll make a motion or some move?
David?
I'll second, Trevor.
And we'll go to a roll call vote. And, um, David Sharp?
Yes.
Carrie Echols?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
And Kenneth Cuddaback, yes. At eight thirty-one PM, we are entering executive session. As indicated, this public meeting will reconvene only to adjourn when we're done with our executive session. So thank you all for attending.